Thanks very much, Katrina. Can everybody hear me? This is kind of an awkward room. I can't see all of you, but hopefully you can see the screen. There are a few seats over here if you're interested. It's also a little bit cold, so you know, feel free to stand up and walk around if you need to warm up. So, thanks very much for coming to our session this morning. As Katrina mentioned, my name is Michelle Giroux. I work with the Ottawa Carlton District School Board in Ottawa, Ontario, which is the capital of Canada. I'm delighted to be with you here today, and I've got really the brains and the workforce behind our Laserfish system with us. Cynthia Donkers. Cindy, you want to turn?[41.46][41.46](laughter) Roger Langlois, and Louise Langlois. And these are some of our staff, both our corporate record staff and our IT staff, who help us with our Laserfish rollouts. I'd love to introduce you to our Laserfish network analyst, but unfortunately that position is vacant at the moment. We're currently recruiting two network analysts, and if anybody's interested in coming to Ottawa, Cindy's looking for some people, so anyway, leave that for you. So, we're here today to tell you a story about our work with Laserfish, and in particular, a project we undertook in the last couple of years. If you've got questions as we go through, please don't hesitate to ask. We'll try and answer them as we move through. So, we're going to talk this morning. We've got about an hour together, and I think this presentation will run 30 to 40 minutes, and then we'll open it up for questions generally. And as I say, if you have any questions as we're going through, please let me know. We're here to share the story of our work, so we're going to tell you a little bit about who we are, the challenge that we were trying to deal with, how we identified the solution, what we did to get through it, what the results were, and then open it up generally to questions. So, the Ottawa Carlton District School Board, located in Ottawa, Canada, the capital of Canada. We have a population in the city of Ottawa of just under 1 million. We're an extremely well-educated community, the most university-educated community in Canada, and we are a huge geographic community. Our geographic area covers 1,072 square miles, so really a large geographic area. And that's important because it has a lot to do with the number of schools we have and the range of schools we have. We have urban, suburban, and rural school settings, and that has a real impact on our So, I talked a little bit about that. We're a K-12 school district, 70,000 students. We have 147 schools, 117 of them are elementary, and 25 are secondary. We have about 4,000 full-time teachers, another 2,000 to 3,000 occasional teachers. We have more than 2,000 administration support staff. And the group of staff I'm really going to talk about today in terms of the work on the Laserfish project is our, what we call professional staff or paraprofessional staff, psychologists, speech-language pathologists, and social workers who work directly with students across the district. Okay? So, the Ottawa Carlton District School Board acquired Laserfish in 2011 after an extensive RFP process. We had amalgamated, two school boards had amalgamated about 10 years earlier, and our records program had never been harmonized. And so, we needed to harmonize our records program. We needed to bring some stability to our paper records program. We needed to start thinking about digitizing our records and about electronic content management. And so, we were really looking for a big solution that would solve our short-term paper records issue and really move us forward. And after, as I say, an extensive RFP process, we decided that Laserfish was the product for us. We were really fortunate, actually, it was interesting, in our RFP process, we considered four bids quite seriously, and two of them were Laserfish, submitted by two different vendors. We were very fortunate to work with ThinkDocs. Frank McDonald from ThinkDocs is here, and he's our service provider for Laserfish, and we have an excellent relationship with ThinkDocs and with Frank. We liked also that Laserfish had some plug-in capacity because that allowed us to think about how we get at the paper record side, and we acquired InfoLinks, a connector, to manage the paper records piece, and so that was very helpful to us. We're licensed for 1,500 named users. We're currently using Laserfish Rio version 9, and we're hoping to upgrade to Laserfish 10 this year. All right? So, like many workplaces, space is a premium for us, physical space, office space. We have an administration building that houses most of our central admin team, and in addition, our facility staff are off-site, they have their own location, but we never have enough space for all the people who are supporting students in schools. So, those folks want an office space at the main building. There's some important networking that happens in the main building, training and resource support, but having an office space for those people who are mostly out on the road is kind of a challenge for us. So, the particular group we're talking about, I mentioned, our professional staff. We have 126 psychologists, social workers, speech-language pathologists. They have an office at our admin building. They spend most of their days out at schools. So, routinely what happened to them is they'd come into our office, they'd get the files they needed, they'd go out, they'd do their appointments. So, they work with a particular group of schools, and so they would have regular student files that they deal with, and they'd be carrying those files around with them, sometimes on a daily basis, sometimes on a weekly basis, sometimes on a monthly basis, sometimes they'd just be signed out for the school year, and there'd be a large reconciliation process at the end of the year. In the spring of 2014, we started to have some discussions about physical space and about the need to relocate those 126 employees. And so, we were going to relocate them to another administration site, and that was going to create a number of challenges. It was going to open up some space in our main building, which was great, but it was going to create some challenges because we had all of their files at the admin building. We didn't want to relocate all of their files to a second site because then the central staff, who do some work with those same records, wouldn't have access to them. And so, we really needed to think, how could we sort of deal with this? It was about May, I think, maybe April, and we started thinking, okay, maybe we could use Laserfish to solve this problem, maybe we could be digitizing these records, and maybe that would free up some office space, but also give them the accessibility they needed. The dilemma, of course, was we needed to have it all in place by Labor Day. So, we didn't have a lot of time, and I don't know, does anybody here work for a school district? So, you know that once the end of June comes, it pretty much shuts down in the school district, and there's not a lot of people around to manage projects. So, an interesting time for us to undertake that kind of project. So, I talked to you already about the staff. Most of us professional staff aren't around over the summer months, so that was one of the challenges we had to think about, and also thinking about the different needs. We were talking about 30,000 student records. I think we think the number now is probably, we thought it was 30,000, a little bit closer to 40,000 by the time we were done. So, the complexity of, we call them the LSS files, so Learning Support Services. This is really our special education department. So, there were access limitations. Practitioners were required to keep the student records with them to go out to multiple schools to do their visits, and so this created situations where there was a lot of movement with records and a lot of limitations in access. So, if I had signed the record out, obviously, and you wanted it, it wasn't available for you, and that's problematic when you're working in a multidisciplinary environment, right, and you've got different professionals accessing same student records. We also had a number of cases where files were left behind, vehicles were broken into, records were lost, we had privacy breaches, and we're talking about some of the most sensitive student records, right? These would be records where there would be psychological testing on students, or there would be testing about speech, language development, those sorts of things. So, certainly not records that we wanted to have in a high-risk situation. We had some continuity of service challenges. Practitioners typically work with a student for a one-year timeframe. Multiple practitioners can work with one student. Files need to be annually reconciled and redistributed, and sometimes the central staff needs to deal with them for placement decisions and other sorts of things, so competing interests in terms of the files. We also had, as I mentioned, space limitations and expenses. So, we had a lot of physical space, premium office space allocated for these records. We had a large file room that stored these records, or that had the space to store the records. Often, the records weren't in the room, but the room was restricted to that. We had multiple locations in addition to the large file room. We had some files distributed at different workstations throughout. So, really inconsistent practice. It was costing us a lot of money and using a lot of real estate. So, we decided the solution was to go digital. We wanted a solution which would allow our professional staff to access the student files from their office at the administration building, from their new office space, or from a school site. The other thing I failed to mention in the front end is all of these professional staff belong to different professional colleges. So, they're regulated, right, by their college, and there are some limitations and restrictions on how they manage their work. So, we had to think a little bit about that as well. So, in terms of the tools we used, we wanted to use Laserfish web access that would simplify access for the different needs of our users. We obviously wanted to use Laserfish scanning because we were scanning in, moving from paper records to electronic system, and we wanted, obviously, to take advantage of quick fields and workflows to maximize automation and optimize our efficiency. So, those were the sort of key Laserfish tools we identified. So, how we got there? Started to do some project planning, a real assessment of our current state, what was the volume of records. So, we had to think about each of those different types of professional staff. What were the kinds of records did they use? So, some of their records were just a few pages long. Some of their records involved tests and examination booklets. Some of them were handwritten or computer-generated reports, stapled, oversized, et cetera. There's just a whole range. So, we had to really work with the clients and think a little bit about what were their kinds of records, and how would we, what would we need to do in order to digitize them to understand the volume of work, but also what would we need to do to support them in the go-forward solution? We had to, as I mentioned, think about their record-keeping requirements. So, what were the rules of their college? What were the rules of our own retention schedule? How do we align those things? What about digital records? What about electronic signatures? What about versioning and control protection? And obviously, we had to think about freedom of information, those sorts of things. We had to assess needs in terms of what were the user needs going forward. Oh, sorry. So, what were our needs for the users on a go-forward basis? How did we understand that? And then we had to think about the resources for the project itself, right? So, there's the whole managing the project, which is the conversion project, and then there's the thinking about how's it going to work in the next stage. We had to establish, obviously, some project timelines for our project. I mentioned that we were working in very short timelines. So, how would we best tackle the work? Obviously, then execute the task and develop an implementation strategy. So, what we did was we started thinking about those groups of records by professional group. So, rather than tackle them all at once, we dealt first with psychologists. Psychologists first, got a good understanding of what their records were, what were the component pieces, what would be involved, worked through their regulatory issues, tried to understand that, and then went through the digitization of all of those, so that we would have, by employee group, move them along and be ready. And then, once we were done them, move to social workers, and then to speech-language Didn't know how to go about the work at first, and then we decided to pull together a team, and we hired a team of summer students and casual staff to come in and work with us. So, you see, here's the team here, and this team is made up of a mix of people, mostly the folks that we brought in for the summer to manage the project, but also our Learning Support Services team, who was the departmental lead. So, I want to talk a little bit about that. So, the, I want to say, most of the folks on this side of the picture are the summer team that we hired. It's a mix of our corporate record staff and some summer students. We brought them in. What we did was we brought in a few folks earlier in the spring and got them working at the project for about a month, Cindy, so that we could understand what the complexity of the project was and start developing some standards. For example, how long would it take us to go through an individual student file? What was the average file length? What was the type? If there were test booklets in it, what was the best way to cut off the edge of the test booklet, scan them in? Do you clean up the files and then do a whole bunch of scanning? You know, how do we break that down? So, we spent about a month with a very small group of people doing that kind of work, and then, once we'd identified what our best practices were, we were able to bring on more members of the team and give them some training and work through how to roll it out in a bigger way. So, that was really an important part of our project thinking. The other piece is very important is our Learning Support Services team, because we were the project managers of the conversion project, but the Learning Support Services team had to play a really important role as the owner of those records, right, and as the key users of that information. So, the superintendent of Learning Support Services was a real project champion, and she had a, we have a leader in each of those responsibility areas, so a leader of our psychologists, a leader of our social workers, and a leader of our speech-language pathologists, and those individuals played a really important role as sort of the super-user, giving us the knowledge about what their business practices were, and also championing and acting as a conduit between their employee group and us. And that synergy between the team that's responsible for the change management and the team that actually owns the records is critical. And the blonde woman in the front was our superintendent of Learning Support Services, and I think one of her real gifts is positive reinforcement, and she was really good at championing and coming around and encouraging and really supporting both her own staff and the summer students in terms of the importance of the work they were doing and moving it through and keeping them motivated. So, here's what we look like in work. That's a picture of the file room where the records were stored. This is one of our students actually doing some scanning there, and here's a look at post-digitalization, the records in the banker's boxes. So, in terms of our solution, we wanted a solution that would be easy to use, right? Simplicity, it works because it's so easy for the end user. So, we wanted minimum user input. We wanted a single format for storage. We wanted something that people would easily buy into and understand why this was better than the alternative. So, we look at the automation of the process. We differentiate between our super-users and our practitioners. So, all super-users and user inputs were minimized and automated. We thought hard about how much information has to be put into the system, okay? Our super-users create student records by scanning standardized index cards. Our practitioners update their records directly. So, that's the sort of general flow. When we look up here at the super-users, the student information is captured and stored as metadata, and then it's used to automatically file records within the classification. All new files are scanned into a single folder. No additional metadata input or user action is required, okay? So, really important liaison work with those super-users to understand their business process and to make sure that the system design really supports them. On the practitioner's side, permissions were restricted to access the records that those folks were working with, and also restricted, also workflow built to recognize unique student identifiers and to automatically add incoming documents to corresponding student records. So, in Ontario, every student in the school district, or every student in Ontario, has an Ontario education number, and that's the student's unique identifier. So, every record that's tied to a student has that unique identifier in it. And so, that was really important in terms of some of the key data we had to think about. So, quick fields, really important to us in this process. So, quick fields, of course, allow for automation. They increase the simplicity. They provide flexibility, scaled ease of use, and relative accuracy, right? We always talk about that relative accuracy because it gets us almost there, and then there has to be some double-checking and stuff, but really good functionality there. So, hardware and software side, in terms of the thinking, what did we do? So, on the hardware side, some of the issues that we had to think about, we had to think about our Laserfish server. What number of licenses did we have in place? And what number of users were we going to have? And how do we reconcile those? And we had to think about the amount of server space we were going to require. In our case, we needed 155 licenses for administrators and practitioners, and we needed 1.5 terabytes of storage space, okay? So, those are some of the numbers we had to start thinking about, what would it mean in practical terms? We also needed high-speed scanners for our scanning staff, departmental super-users, and we had to create departmental hubs for scanning. So, we had to think a little bit about the locations for those hubs. Where would we have scanning locations across the district? Keep in mind that I talked about the size of the district, and so, our professional staff are usually assigned to a particular geographic area, and they work with groups of schools in that area, so we had to think about what were the best locations to sort of facilitate their work. On the software side, we had to think about Laserfish web access, how that would work for those folks, what kind of devices they were using, et cetera. We had to think about quick fields, workflow, where could we automate the workflow, the scanning, and the snapshotting. One of the things that I like most about Laserfish is the workflow piece, right? The capacity to rethink the way you go about your business practice. And one of the challenges, I think, for us all, as we use this kind of software, is we think about our current work practice and we think about automating a paper process as opposed to reimagining that process when the process is automated. And there's an important distinction there, right? Because if all you do is automate a paper process, you might not gain as much efficiency as you should, or you might create a process where it's harder for the user to use. When you're using workflow, you have the capacity to rethink the process, rethink how do you go about the work, what steps are in your work because it's a paper process, and what steps can be just fundamentally different once you automate it. So, I think that's an important piece. So, training and support, really important piece, right? A poorly-trained user can break the system faster than anything else. So, really thought hard about how we would move into our training. So, we had three main areas to our training. We had super-user training, we had practitioner training, and we had follow-up support. So, those are the three big component parts to what we did. Our super-user training was one-to-one training. Our corporate records team did the training. So, it was in-depth training on Laserfish software and best practices. So, we obviously have a smaller group of super-users and spent some time working with them, trying to understand the kinds of questions they had, and really helping them to go deep in the product. Practitioner training is a little bit different. Generally, what happens with this kind of change process is your super-users are going to be champions. They're going to be pretty keen to make the move forward. Practitioners are going to be a little bit more varied, right? Some of them are going to be keen, some of them not quite as interested, but they're all going to have to migrate. So, when we look at our practitioner training, we took a three-session approach. So, the first session was a general overview. We invited all the departmental staff in, and it was a general introduction to change. We talked to them about the kind of change that was coming. We tried to build excitement about what we were offering them and why it would be of interest to them, but we didn't go too deep. It was just kind of a large-scale overview. Then, we moved into a specific use demonstration. So, all departmental staff, again, were invited, and they got a more detailed overview of Laserfish web access and a demonstration of scanning and how to save a record. So, again, higher-level training, but teaching everybody, these are what the key processes look like, all right? Then, we went to more personalized training and setup. So, we did training in groups of five to seven. We set up the software and drivers. We did a demonstration of use, so more specific. We're then getting into the sort of how to use and did that kind of work. Then, we spent a lot of time on the follow-up support. So, we provide regular support, make sure that those newly-trained users are there using it, and make sure that we can address any specific concerns they have, troubleshoot any issues, and provide one-to-one additional training. So, a large part of our success in the follow-up is really comes through monitoring, right? Once you train the users, then you've got to be watching to see, how quickly are they starting to use the system? How many files are created? How many people are logging in? What are they actually doing? And then, also looking at what are their use patterns in there, and going back and addressing specific concerns, and helping to talk to them a little bit about best practices. So, like any project, we had some challenges and limitations as we worked our way through. So, I talked about the Ontario education number. That's our unique identifier, and so, each record has to have that. It's the only unique identifier that we have. The dilemma is, when we have new students, sometimes the issuance of the unique identifier is a bit delayed. So, let's say, a good example is right now, we're working with a lot of new students who are Syrian refugees. So, those folks would come in, and they would register, and they might immediately need support from our Learning Support Services team, right? We know these are high-need students who are going to need to be supported by some of our professional staff. So, we might immediately want to be creating some files. In our first meetings and student profiles, we might identify the need for files for those students, but the OEN is lagging by a week or so, and so, we sometimes come into some issues there. We had to figure out how to manage that because that caused stalled files and delays in Laserfish. And that's part of the multiple systems and lack of standardization, right? Like any large organization, we've got many different systems to manage our students, and having those systems speak to each other is really important, and sometimes there are some gaps there. So, having to think through some of those things. And then, order and flow. So, you know, we have to remember that in our case, we're not dealing with physical products, we're dealing with people. Students are human, each of their needs is unique, some of the challenges they encounter and some of the ways that we interact with them differ because their needs differ, and therefore, we have to have some flexibility in our process, right, in terms of dealing with the files. So, implementation and monitoring. It's one thing to create a system, and it's another thing to use it properly. So, key to an effective implementation strategy is to ensure that the users are actually using the system. And to do that, the system administrator has to be regularly monitoring and auditing usage to ensure that the system design is meeting user needs and that users are using the system properly. And that's where the audit function comes in. The audit function is critical to the ongoing success of the system and helps to identify additional training requirements, either in the short term or for future project phases, right? And one of the great things about Laserfish is there's so much reporting in the audit function, but you really have to use that. And from a project management perspective, you have to use it not just to see if people are using the system, but whether or not you've set it up, right? If the majority of your users are running into the same kind of problem or challenge, then maybe you've been deficient in your training, or there's something in your setup that's not quite right. So, some thinking about how to get at that, so, an ongoing cycle there. So, we were very pleased with this project. We had very impressive results. So, we scanned 1.7 million pages, which equals 950 banker's boxes, or 950 linear feet of shelf space, or 170 standard four-door filing cabinets, or 638 square feet of office space, which equals about $64,000 annually in leasing costs, okay? So, depending on what you want to measure, if we laid the pages that we scanned end to end, they would extend over 1.5 million feet, which is they would extend over 1.5 million feet, which is equivalent to the length of 4,300 Canadian football fields. So, everybody is measuring something different. For some of you, it's physical space in your office. For some of you, it's numbers of file cabinets. For some of you, it's real money and rent. For us, it wasn't so much the rent savings, right? Because we own our building, but it was the physical space. In the end, we actually didn't need to reassign the office space for those workers. They actually maintained office space at our head office because we were able to reconfigure the space and give them a different kind of workstation. So, they got to stay in the building. They were very happy, but we digitized their records. They had better access to their records. We didn't have so much space tied up just in records, and we had much better security and much better access and control of the information. So, that was a huge, hugely successful project from our perspective. So, in terms of results, we had very rapid adoption by our users. Within two weeks of training, 35 users, almost 700 logins to the system, 350 pages were modified, 200 pages were added, over 100 new records created. So, when I talk about the monitoring piece, that's what we were seeing in the short term. But the real benefits to us, records available anytime, anywhere for everyone. Critical information protected and secured. Information is easily found and shared, and continuity between staff and over school years equals improved service. Our primary client are students, right? Our goal is to promote the student achievement and well-being of those 70,000 kids. And this work means that we're better able to support the kids because our professional staff are in huge demand, right? 70,000 kids and only 126 professional staff to support their psychological, speech language, or social work needs. It's not a lot of people to distribute amongst those, that number of kids. So, the more time those folks can be dealing with students rather than dealing with records, the better served the students are, right? And that's a long-term savings for everybody. So, what did we learn from this project? We learned we have tremendous capacity. One of the things we liked about Laserfish from the beginning was the capacity. When we were going through that RFP process and we were thinking about the range of things we could do with Laserfish, we would, in our reference checks, ask other clients, "Well, what about this? Are you using Laserfish for this?" And routinely, what we heard from those people we were calling was, "Oh, well, we use Laserfish in our HR department, but we don't use it for anything else." Or, "Oh, you can do that with Laserfish?" Or, "Oh." And the challenge that I always have in our organization or give back to my team is we've invested a significant amount of money into this product. Are we getting everything out of that investment? So, before you look for a different solution or another vendor or something else, what can we do with this particular product? And it has great capacity, and we learned a lot about our capacity through this particular project. We also learned a lot about leveraging systems, when to use Laserfish, when to use something else. We learned a lot about planning and how to plan a project and how to work with other departments. And it's interesting because we were very fortunate in this project. We had a couple of things that were really critical. We had a real need for change. We had a real champion, a willing partner in the department who were also really willing to champion the change that they were undertaking. And we had a talented team on our corporate records side and our IT side to support it and figure it out. So, that was really useful to us. And we were able to empower people, both the folks who were doing the transition and the folks who were going to be end-users. And that empowerment piece is really good. Obviously, we've talked a lot about optimizing resources and improving efficiencies. A big thing we learned is we can exceed expectations. And one of the great things about this project, particularly the hiring of the summer students, that was really key for us. I mean, we're a learning organization, so obviously, we believe in students and the capacity of students to learn and to do great things, but this project really allowed us to put that belief into action. And this project was done in the summer of 2014. Fast forward to the summer of 2015, where we start thinking about the next big Laserfish project we want to undertake. And so, we think, "Wow, last year's model really worked for us. We're going to do something similar, and we're going to continue to expand." But we ran into some other issues organizationally. We had some labor challenges, and as a result of those labor challenges, we had some work that was key work that needed to be done, that the employee group wasn't doing as part of a strike action, long and complicated. But the bottom line is, we were able to take the project model from this project and apply it to that other project, emerging need, and find a solution. And that was really huge for the organization, to learn and understand that you can, in very short order, undertake a project of this kind of magnitude. And you can do it. You can generate savings. You can be more efficient as a result and better organized. So, that's the story of our project. Happy to answer any questions, and probably I'll have Cindy and Roger and Louise answer most of your questions.
On a higher level view, can you kind of talk about how this works? When you get a student transferring out of your district and what you send to the other district, and then also, you know, if they change case managers, how do you change those security levels?
Okay. So, I'll start, and Roger and Cindy might need to jump in. So, first of all, in Ontario, we have a very scripted or legislated process about student transfers. So, every student has that unique identifier, and there is a provincial database for student records. And we differentiate between a student record, which is their Ontario student record, that's their academic file with their transcript and stuff, and then these records don't, aren't allowed to be in the student record. They're a separate file that's just a learning support services file about that student, okay? So, two slightly different things. So, when a student moves out of our district, their Ontario student record follows them, both the paper record and the electronic record in a legislative process goes through. So, we'd be happy to talk to you, but that's probably an offline thing about how the OSR process works for us. In terms of this project, your question, I think, was around what happens when the practitioner changes? And that would be security and sign-in, right? So, if Fraser is no longer supporting the student, do you want to come and explain So, this is Cindy Johnkers. Cindy is our corporate records supervisor.
So, for example, if a student is changing practitioners, the, all practitioners have access to all of the records within their discipline. So, all of the psychologists have access to all of the other psychologist's information and as well as the social workers and the speech-language pathologists. So, everybody has access to their own area of information. So, if they're assigned a new student, they can just go ahead right away without any change in security and are able then to access that information. If they were changing, say, for example, a social worker needed to gain access about a student's psychological file, that social worker doesn't have that access. That psychologist would need to export the information and provide it to the social worker, or the psychologist could also, or through an administrative function, enable access to that particular student's file through security. If a student is transferring to another school within Ontario and it's determined that the psychologist needs to provide psychological information on that student to another school, because we're all electronic, the information would have to be exported and sent electronically to that other psychologist, or the other option, too, is to print it off and send it along to them if required. Okay?
What are some key pieces of advice you give to other school boards that are going and embarking on Laserfish projects in this field?
So, the question, I think, was what other advice would we give to school boards who are thinking of embarking on Laserfish? So, you're just at the front end of your Laserfish journey?
No, I'm actually following Laserfish. I'm just wondering.
Okay. So, we, I think, and I'll start, and Cindy and Roger may want to jump in. I think for us, we had a couple of specific projects in mind, and we knew that, like any change management process, there would be some issues. So, we started with projects within our own department. So, projects that were in my span of control as a department head because they were more involved in the purchasing and acquisition, it was more part of our regular discussions. So, it was easier to get buy-in then. And we started thinking about which of those projects would give us the greatest, either increase in functionality or greatest efficiency improvements, right? Solve big problems or give some exposure to other people. And I think over time, we've done a combination of big fixes and small fixes as we've rolled out to other departments. So, we've kind of worked with getting a department interested, saying, you know, the department says we have a problem. We say, "We can solve that," and then working with them and working through. So, for example, we worked with our labor relations team. They wanted to deal with grievances, so a big problem and kind of messy, but a small group of people who have access. And so, we redesigned their process, and then they became huge champions. So, within HR, they started to talk about it. We're starting to look at a broader rollout of Laserfish forms. And as we do that, differentiating between two things. One is what forms does everybody use so that it would, you know, give access to everybody and some exposure? And what forms are bigger problems or would be important to the district? So, that sort of thinking. So, we're really excited to see some of those things in this morning's presentation about some standard templates and stuff because I don't know about your organizations, but in my experience, school districts lack a lot of depth on the business side. And so, the whole discussion about business process reengineering with the client department is pretty overwhelming to them. And so, having some of those standard templates, I think, that we saw this morning is a really good way for us to be able to explain to people, this is sort of what your business looks like, right? And takes away a lot of that mystery. So, sort of our thinking. I don't know, Cindy, if you have a few?
Thank you.
Other questions?
Regarding work processes, how many work processes do you automate and how much time do you save?
Good question. So, the question was, in terms of workflow, how many processes do we automate and how much time do we save? And I'm going to leave that to Cindy or Roger. Pick a particular. Roger?
Our workflows, so our workflows were created by the previous analyst, so I can't speak too much on that. But basically, our workflow is one massive workflow for all of our processes that we have. We have a process used by corporate records for public documents. You know, if there's a public meeting, the document goes to the public and is available through a web link, for example. That's one process that we automated. Another process for any of these psychological services or things like that, any learning support services, it takes their documents, puts them to the appropriate location so that, and sets up all the security. It's all done in the one workflow. So, we drop the document into incoming documents. It picks up the metadata that we've applied to the document, sends it where it's supposed to be, assigns the rights. But there's multiple pro, I can't answer them all. I tell them all, unfortunately, I wasn't involved setting them up.
So, a good example, I'm responsible for the communications department. So, one of the things that we have used Laserfish for is to automate our media clippings, right? And so, we were doing media clippings manually. We were using a media clipping service, and we were using another service through an association. My communications team has a budget, I'm going to say maybe $100,000 a year, and we were spending up to $20,000 a year on the media monitoring service and still had this one person doing it. And so, there's a real duplication of service there and a huge investment. And we were able to use Laserfish to automate that process. We have the one person managing it, but we put it all into a workflow. It's sent out automatically. People can subscribe or not subscribe. We eliminated that $20,000 annual cost, and we have much more control over the system. So, that's a good example of. Other questions?
I'm brand-new to this. We haven't even started using it. I work at a K-12 school, a small district. How do you connect your education number, your ID number, 290 number, to all of the different documents that it is normally listed on?
So...
Something like a birth certificate or shop record or something to that. So, how do you get that where it links them all together? So, when you have Google lookup of a past record on a student, you put in their name or ID, if you have it, and then it brings all those. How do they connect that?
So, being your metadata, you want to talk about that?
The way we've done it is every one of our students has a card. It's a piece of paper, basically, and it has their name and their education number on it. So, that is the first piece of anything, any file that's being opened. So, we scan that in, or we can send it into Laserfish, and through quick fields and workflow, that information is picked up. The, a brand-new file is created for that student. So, let's just say it's a psychology file. And the information will say, and picking up from this card, will say the first name, the last name, the date of birth, and the OEN. So, if we are then scanning something else into that student's file, if it's a birth certificate, for example, we'll search that student's name, we'll find the student's file, we'll just scan it in automatically, or we can also search for the student's file, find the OEN, and label through, again, through another workflow process, label, name the file, the student's OEN. So, name, as we're scanning in the birth certificate, what are you going to call it? We're going to call it this student's OEN, and then it automatically is taken into the student's file. So, there's no, and then when you are searching, Laserfish's search function is unbelievable. So, you can just search on the student's name, the student's OEN, even dates of birth, and you'll have everything coming up with, that's related to that. So, it's very, very simple. Okay?
She's referring to the card she's referring to. It's from our student system. It's the Office Index Card. So, we will print that out and scan that in. Using QuickField, it generates the folder for a student automatically. So, we, and that's what we were talking, that's what Michelle was talking about earlier. We have these hubs. So, before they, any support staff can open a record on a student, the administrator scans this card, puts it in, and that creates the folder for the student. So, everything goes in from there.
So, when they first come into the, when they first come into your district, do everybody get this minimal, general information? And that's put in, and then that way, anything else added later on, you get automatically some of the difference, right?
Right. Because we have another student system, completely separate system, a database that keeps track of all this information.
Right.
And one of the processes in there, you can generate Office Index Card, and that triggers the record in Laserfish.
So, we have to use the other student system, right? We have to have a student record system, and there are certain reporting requirements, and our funding is tied to it. So, you know, there's a lot of complexity there. What we need, though, from a business side, is to have a system like Laserfish that can talk to it, right? And so, that we can integrate and start building workflows and stuff.
So, does your, does Laserfish talk to your student system?
Not directly at this time.
No.
We're looking at using the Laserfish connector to see if we can't use that to, because it'll pick up a specific spot on the screen to carry that over to Laserfish, but we haven't gotten to that point yet.
And that's some of the student system limitations.
Yep.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I hope this has been helpful for you, and it's warmed up a little bit in here, so that's good. [applause]